Hey, good morning, everyone. Sorry for the delay. I had a little issue to resolve outside the boardroom. This will be our first regular meeting of 2023, so it'll start with our, you know, just a brief, what's called an org meeting where we, you know, consider a resolution that designates our chair, vice chair, appoints folks to various committees and commissions, that designates our newspaper of record, our meeting times, our our general times of business for the county. So that's makes it a little different than most meetings and also a little different to some, you know, faces in different positions in the room. Definitely want to welcome Dallas Schroeder to his first board meeting as commissioner and probably his, I don't know, 200th board meeting total. And then Ron DeBronne in her new position as clerk and recorder. But before we call the roll, I would like to invite Pastor Farthing up to provide an invocation and lead us in the pledge.
Pledge. No, we pray first, sorry. New year. Father, we thank you for this new year. We thank you for an opportunity to start fresh. Lord, I ask that you watch over this board, this body this year as they watch over the needs of this county, the people that elected them. We ask your blessing on the proceedings and we ask for safety during this bad weather for the people in our county. We know that when we seek your will, you will deliver and you will offer your help, assistance, guidance, and we thank you for this. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. All righty. The time is now 9:04. Amanda, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Richardson?
Here.
Commissioner Thayer?
Here.
Commissioner Schroder?
Here.
All righty, so our first order of business is approval of the agenda. Appreciate a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion and second to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. First items of business we have are on consent. I'd accept a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to approve consent agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, as I said, our first order of substantial business is just the org meeting chart portion. And as I said, it's all contained within one resolution. So I would accept a motion for to approve the organizational resolution as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the organizational chart as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the organizational resolution. Actually, before I call for a vote, any discussion at the table?
The only discussion I have is thank you very much for everybody that serves the county.
Any public comment? All right, seeing none, I would accept a motion to approve the organizational resolution as presented.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All righty. Elected officials, department head staff reports. Do we have anything from elected officials today? All righty, well, as we were making recognitions, I do want to, once again, just congratulate Sherry Hewlett as our treasurer and Susan Murphy, our assessor for the, starting into their their new term, their second term. So congratulations. All righty, staff reports. We had a one staff report today coming from our Office of Economic Development, discussion of the recently completed economic development strategic plan. Mark, the floor is yours.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, commissioners, electeds, staff, citizens. I'm Mark Denreter, Elbert County Economic Development Manager, and I'm here today with Jason, the consultant who worked with us on this project.
Good morning, commissioners. It's a pleasure to see you again and pleasure to meet you. My name is Jason Godfrey, CEO of Better City. We're an economic development consulting firm that has operations throughout the country, and we've been privileged to work with with Mark and his team on the Elbert County Economic Development Strategy.
So this economic development strategic plan was really a group effort, I must say, with the public, county and town staff, leadership, you gentlemen, and of course Eric and our department. Thanks to you, Eric. Appreciate all your work on this. If you go to the the plan, on page three, you'll see the process. And this was, you know, this started back in June of 2022 and really wrapped up more or less in the November, December timeframe of last year. The first order of business was for us to to get our consultants out on the ground, in the field, did a full, you know, half-day tour of Elbert County so they could get a sense of of where we are, who we are, what we are. And that was a good, a good trip. The consultants did review many past studies that are here in the county that have been conducted over the past 20 some odd years, and also studies done for the incorporated towns in Elbert County as well. So there's lots of analysis. And then, of course, quite a bit of stakeholder engagement. We did interviews, focus groups, and then a public survey. On the survey front, we had about 310 responses from the public. And then when you drill down looking at the the survey responses themselves, and you know, there's those sections where you can actually type in or write in additional comments, there were almost 650, what we call free-form responses. So that was really good to get even additional and more feedback from from the public. Lots of data analysis and then the community input were were used to identify the the key core objectives and strategies that that came out of this plan. So on page four of the document, you'll see the summary of strategy. So there were three primary objectives, and those were centered around community character, fiscal stability, and then the local economy. And then four strategies came out of that. And we had building that rural identity, facilitating commercial development, recruiting businesses, and then the support, supporting existing businesses, of course, a very core function of economic development. And now I'm going to have Jason go over in a little more detail some of the the various strategies, objectives here in the the plan itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I wanted to make a few kind of overall introductory comments before I get into some of the some of the actual strategies. This has been a really amazing engagement. Mark and Eric are exceptional economic development professionals. I say that, you know, having worked with clients throughout the country. Their level of involvement and engagement, their detail has just been exceptional. When we interviewed for this for this engagement, one of the things we said is, look, we're not going to be that firm that gives you 150 recommendations and just identifies everything that's out there and good luck, go to it. We really want to focus down and say, you know, here's the few key objectives that that you should be working on. So as we went through this process, a couple of things stood out. One is that that Mark and Eric are really dialed in, and most of the recommendations were things that they came up with. And so, you know, they would they would present, in the course of discussions, they'd present some ideas. We'd go vet it, talk to people, look at it, and analyze it, come back, say, yeah, that makes perfect sense. That's a great direction. So they were really tuned into what needed to happen. The second thing is that we we came with this list of, all right, here's the things that we think are really critical. We said, now let's pare it down. And and they kept saying, no, we're going to do that one, we're going to do that one. And we end up with 34 recommendations, which is way more than we normally would would want, would think is feasible or realistic. But it's indicative of Mark's dedication and Eric's just vitality and like, bring it, let's do it. They said, no, let's let's identify what we need to do for these next five years, and then we can go ahead and prioritize them and and use certain dip and say, oh, there's grant available, and we can move this one up. But but this is reflective of their passion and their and their their desire to really make a big difference. As Mark talked about the the broad sections, and it became clear to us really early on in the interviews, and and the public participation was just off the charts, that as a percentage of the population, the amount that that completed the surveys is the best we've ever seen. And really great engagement with the with the two high schools. We had a focus group with the two high schools and got incredible insights from the youth. And it became clear to us that there's there's kind of dichotomy, that people really value the the lifestyle here, and and they're willing to to actually have less amenities to preserve the open spaces and the views and so forth. But there's not as many opportunities to actually interact with that lifestyle. You say, okay, how are the trails there? There aren't any. How are the, you know, if you want to go do some outdoor activity, where is it? Not within the county. So it's kind of interesting. We value this rural lifestyle, but there's not ways to participate. If you're on a 100-acre ranch, yeah, but those who who don't have that, there aren't as many ways to really live this rural lifestyle. So that that first recommendation is all about, if you're going to be rural, be rural, and make it so that even people who might live in a subdivision can participate in the rural lifestyle that they so value, that's so critical, is the reason why they moved here, is what they 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 came here for. The people that moving here are not the enemies. I mean, they're they're here because they like this lifestyle. They want to participate in this rural lifestyle, even though there's more than there were. There there's so much unity into what the the people, the residents, the businesses see as this county's strengths and what it should be. And so we're those, that first recommendation is really about doubling down on that. You've got the Colorado State University Extension Office. That should be leading more forage. We should, we're doing forage, let's do more, right? We have rodeo, let's do more. We have corn maze, let's let's really lean into that, lean into this this lifestyle. And so many people, you know, they come here, they want, you know, I don't want a neighbor right next to me, give me space. But they do want that connection, right? They do want that, they they want to be part of a rural community that has this this community feel. And so so many of our recommendations are around, how do we create venues and events that really foster this sense of community that's so missing in the world today? And and really, it's it's Back to the Future, it's going back to what Elbert County looked like 100 years ago, right? You had density. I mean, Simons is a dense place. All the all the houses are right there. And they had, they had events that were town events, and that was the lifestyle in Elbert County. And it's how do we get back to that, which is really the soul of the county? The next one is to facilitate commercial development. And the the motivating factor here is you have a a fiscal time bomb, which is, and we've talked to Mark about that, there's more conversation to have, but as as, you know, you inherit all these roads, and you heard all this infrastructure, as you have housing, and their property tax level, if you if you just say, all right, if this trend continues, what does our property tax base look like? And what does the cost look like? You can't get there from here. And so we identified there's a significant amount of growth in commercial property taxes needed. So how does that happen? And so we give specific recommendations on, you know, how to facilitate the commercial development, how to to make the processes better, how to create some incentives so 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 you can target specific industries, specific companies, and say, you're the kind of company we want here, that needs to be here, and we can help you be successful here. And then even specific industries. So so, and this came from the the interviews with the people, the residents, saying, what what would be successful here? What would improve your quality of life? And and based on that, we put together specific game plans for, you know, urgent care. You need urgent care, you need medical care. You have more veterinarians and doctors. You know, how do we, how do we recruit those people here, those industries, things of that nature? So there's specific plans around how to address that and how to bring in those industries. The last one is about supporting businesses, because honestly, most most economic development happens by your your own businesses growing, and especially in smaller communities. So, you know, as we talked to people, it was interesting that that you could see a lot of a lot of entrepreneurial people, a lot of people who are handy and who would love to get away from that commute they're doing right now, right? And would love to do something here locally. How do you support people like that? How do we create an entrepreneurial ecosystem that really supports people and gives them a way to to create industry and to create to create strength and economic growth here? So there's specific recommendations around creating a really vibrant economy and specific things that Mark and his team can do to to create opportunities and to strengthen those local businesses. So you become a real epicenter of entrepreneurship. And we think that really leans into the character of the community and the character of the people who live here. So that's at a high level. We really, you can read the report, see the recommendations, but what we really wanted to present is the reasoning behind it, the thought behind it, and why we think this is such a critical, a critical moment for the county to really take control and be intentional about what comes next and how you can shape the county in this future. So open up any questions or comments?
Questions or comments from the table? Not seeing any. What I would like to do, I mean, a lot of really good work, and as you had mentioned, there's resource commitments that need to be considered. We've probably got a lot of grant dollars we want to go after, and we're talking what sounds like about a five-year endeavor. So I would really like to set up probably in the, I know the, there's probably end dates to your contract, and I'll leave this to Mark to kind of sort out. But we anticipate having our new county manager on board and by the end of the month or around the end of the month, and probably sometime middle of next month, to really sit down, kind of in workshop mode and and go through this and kind of hear more in-depth the thought processes that went in, and how do we, how do we look forward to applying the resources we've already got in the hop here for the 23 budget? And what are the impacts? What do we need to be looking at for future year budgets to bring this to fruition? Because I know a lot of it are are big heavy lifts, and a lot of them are really dependent on helping others invest their money here. So getting that external investment person's trying to build everything on unlimited tax base or a very focused tax base, I think is really important. But I definitely am in a lot of good work that went into this. Mark?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, we've already had a conversation with Jason and his team, and they're more than willing to, you know, come back. Maybe it's virtual, what have you, but at least we can all be together in the room and communicate further on this and strategize as a group. And we can elaborate more in in that type of venue. So really appreciate it. You know, just, I I do want to say, we have really enjoyed working with Better City and Jason and his team. It's been a, it's been a really good learning experience, and and they've taught us a lot. So thank you, Jason. And it's it's important to note here, I'll close with this, you know, when we do a plan like this, there's there's guidance and recommendations. But when it comes down to local priorities, and you know, that's really going to determine the the what and the when and so on. So it will be certainly exciting to to really drill down and and start targeting and and taking some action on this plan, and we intend to do that.
I have one quick question. Is the the population of Elbert County is statistically old, and there's not a lot of young people that stay in the county. Is there something within this economic development strategy plan that addresses that and gives us some guidance of how we can keep our young people here?
Yeah, I, thank you, Commissioner. It's a very good question. I think there are different layers within the plan that do address that. I think it's, you know, when you look at, you know, the the existing businesses, for example, and and those support services and trying to help these businesses grow. And then, and then when you go into target recruitment and trying to bring in new types of business, more different types of amenities and core services that'll help, let's say, young folks that that go off, you know, and explore the world, go to college, whatever they may do, and then they go, hmm, you know, I'd like to come back home to Elbert County. And they're, you know, it's it's evolving in a way that really suits me and maybe my young family to 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 come back home and be here with those type of things. It's, it's really important to, you know, I'll close with this on on this particular question, just the rural identity we talked about, right? I mean, so many of the of the people that grow up here, you know, they they treasure, you know, this this experience, this culture as well. So enhancing and 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 leaning into that, as Jason indicated, I think that will also help, you know, capture and and keep the the young folks here and and want to come back if they do leave.
Just want to comment on that. The coolest part of this whole engagement was by far the focus group with the high schools. The kids here are amazing. You've got some great kids. And one thing that's really interesting is most of the time when you talk to high school kids, they're like, I can't wait to get out here, right? You know, I'm going to go spread my wings. Not the case here. The people, the kids love the environment, they love this community. And, you know, while they acknowledge, while they acknowledge I might go to high or to college somewhere else, they want to come back. The preponderance of them, the vast majority want to come back. So it's extremely positive, is that you have that desire.
So what kind of jobs should we be developing to lure them back?
Yeah, I think that I think there's two answers to that. One is, one is housing, right? So the housing state that was just completed is really critical to that. So how do you have entry-level homes that people can come back to, young families? And then the second is what kind of jobs? I think the the remote workers is a big deal. That, and we've talked a little bit about, you know, having a remote office space here and supporting that. That's a big deal, and that's that's only going to grow, right? So that's one. And then secondly, several of the industries that we're targeting would be would be ideal for for bringing in, you know, starting, starting professionals. So we've got a list of six or seven different industries to target.
I do thank you. And again, when you're embarking on something that is, I guess, strategic in nature and affects the whole county, I think the, you know, getting that workshop settled up with with all the right people in it or follow-on meetings, because you can't strategically change the county from the one office in the basement. This is, I mean, you guys are are guiding light, but it's got to be a lift that everybody's participating in. So again, very much appreciated. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, commissioners. Have a great day.
Yep. And I did say I did neglect earlier when we were doing the organizational meeting and appointments, I did want to recognize DeeDee Schatz-Grace. She's joining the planning commission as our our newest member and was appointed today. And I thank you for for coming out and and the service that you will be providing to our communities. So, all right, at this point, I'd open for open public comment if there is any. Not seeing any in the room. Amanda, I don't believe we had anybody that wanted to be called or sent comment to be read.
Correct. We did not.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I'll close public comment at this time. We have no discussion items. The first, before we get to specific actions, we do have a brief executive session, so we'll be departing momentarily to do some discussions over personnel, personnel actions and the consideration of of offering a position for county manager. So I would accept a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Chairman, I hereby move that the Elbert County Board of County Commissioners go into executive session for the purpose of discussing related to personnel matters pursuant to section 2464024 and 2464024F of the Colorado revised statutes. Specifically, I move the Board of County Commissioners go into executive session to discuss personnel matters, consideration of hiring county manager from finalist pool.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to go into executive session to discuss personnel matters regarding the hiring of a county manager from the finalist pool. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Okay, we're in executive session. You folks are welcome to stay here. We're going to depart to the county manager's office, have some discussions privately, and then we'll come back and likely have some a public motion to make. Thank you. Thank you.
All righty, thank you. We're now returning from executive session. The time is now nine fifty-one, and the Board of County Commissioners will now come back out of executive session. The participants in the executive session were myself, Commissioner Thayer, Commissioner Schroeder, and County Attorney Greer. The Board took no formal action in contravention to Section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four of the Colorado Revised Statutes, and no adoption of any proposed policy, position, resolution, rule, excuse me, rule, or regulation took place. For the record, if anyone who participated in the executive session believes that any substantial discussion of any matters not related to the motion to go into executive session occurred during the executive session, or that any improper action occurred during the executive session in violation of the Colorado Open Meetings Law, I would ask that you now state your concerns for the record. Seeing none, our next item of business is a motion pursuant to the discussions that we did have. So I would accept a motion regarding the consideration of hiring a county manager from the finalist pool.
Mr. Chairman, I participated in the interview process and provided a county tour to our potential candidate here. Let him visualize the entire county, spent several hours with him, have had several discussions with him, and I am very impressed with his skill level. With that, I would like to make a motion to give the chairman the authority to make a formal offer to Sean Fletcher and execute an employment agreement if concluded.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to grant myself as chair to make a formal offer to Mr. Sean Fletcher and execute an employment contract if we can come to an agreement. That's on the table if there's any other discussion.
I've had the opportunity as well to have different, couple of different meetings. The initial panel participant, and then later on when he came out for, to see the county. Was impressed with his knowledge, believe he'll be a good fit for the county if he accepts the position, and look forward to moving forward with this.
Yeah, I'd echo that. The process up to this point, generally, you know, we had advertised the position back in July. We received quite a few applications that really didn't meet the requirements of the position. We engaged Robert Half as a recruiting company to see if they could come up with some more solid candidates. Mr. Fletcher was one of those candidates that was provided through that, that method. As we had a interview panel that consisted of then-County Clerk Schroeder, Bart Greer as the attorney, we had TJ Steck, Fire Chief from outside, somebody that would be coordinating with a future county manager.
Sheriff.
Oh, and Sheriff Tim Norton also participated in that. We had offered three interviews, two responded and were interviewed. Out of that process, that team had recommended Mr. Fletcher be considered. So he was, after having the informal discussions that Grant discussed with him, we identified him as a solid candidate and announced him fourteen days ago as a, as the sole finalist for our finalist pool statute required fourteen day period of public notification. He's got a tremendous background. He does bring quite a bit of experience in local government. Currently a deputy county administrator is the term they use in Kansas. Lives in Dodge City, Ford County, similar in size to our county, similar in budget, a little bit bigger budget than our county, but kinda not only checks all the blocks on paper, but I think is somebody that will fit very well in our structure. That's all I have, but we have a motion and a second on the table. So all in favor of granting me the authority to make an offer and execute a contract, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Thank you, guys. Moving on to our specific action items for the day. We have consideration of the November, or excuse me, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two minutes. I'd accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes for December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two as written and dispense with the reading of those minutes.
As Commissioner Schroeder was not a commissioner at the time of that meeting, I will second the motion. So we have a motion and a second, any discussion? I would call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain.
Okay, thank you. Second item of business is consideration of the December twenty-one, twenty twenty-two minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the December twenty-one, twenty twenty-two minutes as written and dispense with the reading of those minutes.
I'll second that, and again, for the same reason. Wonderfully prepared minutes, and they were prepared by the former clerk and current Commissioner Schroeder. So with that, I would call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. I'll abstain.
Okay, thank you. The motion passes, previous motion passed as well. All righty, the next item we have is cancellation of taxes. And before anybody gets too excited, their cancellation of just a small, specific set of taxes, as much as I would love to vote to eliminate taxes. Sherry.
Good morning, Commissioners, and congratulations, Commissioner Schroeder, on your election to the Board. Sherry Hewlett, Elbert County Treasurer. Unfortunately, this is not a good time of the year for me to ask to cancel taxes, obviously, as my job is to collect taxes. So as you see in the resolution I have before you, we have an amount to cancel of twenty-five thousand five fifteen twenty-six. And the majority of that money is an oil and gas property. And unfortunately, the taxes on that particular property go back as far as two thousand sixteen. I tried to collect from the oil and gas owner. He did work with us for a while, and then he stopped returning calls, answering calls, and so on. Unfortunately, when we started trying to collect, it was twenty twenty, or shortly thereafter, and so he was really struggling with the production. I work hand in hand with Susan on these items. And the mobile homes that are on here, there's what, four? Three. They're either gone, or they're destroyed, so those are minimal. The oil and gas property, I talked with Susan on that as well. Unfortunately, he's not producing, so you can't go back to the first purchaser. Statute says that as, you know, if they fail to pay the taxes, then you can go to them, but there is no purchaser. So that's what we have. Unfortunately, it's more than I'd like to request to cancel, but hopefully we can get this cleaned up. And then if he, you know, our options are to seize the property or take him to collection. And neither one of those options are very viable, unfortunately. But hopefully, if he can get back into production and the property's still there, the personal property is still there. So we'll see what happens. But unless you have any other questions, that's what I have before you today.
I'll just make a quick comment. You do not want to take that property.
Right.
Because it's what you call in the oil and gas business, an orphan well.
Right.
That is nonproductive, it's noneconomic, and the cost to abandon that well would be significantly more than this tax issue.
Right. And in talking with my other treasurer constituents, they're of the same opinion. We've talked about this many times at conferences, and it's a problem throughout the state, and especially in the smaller counties, I think, but it happens, you know, so.
Yeah, I think we're much better off this way than
Right.
than picking up the liability and ownership.
Right.
It's clear to be on the state's orphaned well list that they'll eventually
Correct, yes.
eventually get
Yes, sir.
up on their dime versus, which is really contributed by industry, so.
Yes.
So with that, I'd accept a motion to approve treasurer's request for cancellation of taxes.
I'll move to approve resolution, resolution number twenty-three to be determined, cancellation of uncollectible tax assessments.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution regarding cancellation of uncollectible taxes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All righty, the next up we have Aggett School District requesting a fee waiver for subdivision application or adjustment of some lot lines, I don't recall which, but Greg?
Just real quick, Aggett has property, the Aggett School District has some property that they would like to subdivide. There's two homes on the subject property. They would like to get a fee waiver for the minor subdivision application fee. They've indicated a willingness to pay other fees that might be associated with their application, but they would like a waiver of that to help them accomplish this goal. It trades out some nonconformities. We've taken a look at that, and we're comfortable with that from at least a staff perspective.
Questions or comments? Okay, yeah, I guess that, to me, it's just a, we're trading tax dollars for tax dollars, and it's eight hundred dollars that could be going to educating kids out that way, so.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the Aggett School District subdivision fee waiver.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to waive fees for the Aggett County School, or Aggett School District subdivision. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, our last item up is consideration on a proposed ordinance and resolution regarding contractor licensing. JR, could you come on up? I know you, this feels like it's dragged on forever, but in this county, we can take twenty years to get something done. Or we have, so, yeah. As we have a new commissioner on board, could you kind of just roll through the process, why this was generated, and what the impacts on both citizens and contractors would be?
Sure. So this came about because most of our neighboring counties don't have, or do have, a contractor registration. We do not. It's been in the works for two to three years, trying to get it going in this county. Basically, what it does is any contractor who wishes to perform work inside of the county limits has to register with us, show proof of insurance, workers' compensation, things like that, and proof of passing a test essentially that says they're qualified to work on what they wish to work on. It's an annual license, and then we keep that registration with us. And then if people have questions about who is a licensed contractor in the county, who they can work with, we have that list that we can then distribute to them. It doesn't affect a homeowner or any person who wishes to do something that doesn't require a permit. That's the down and dirty.
You had mentioned, like, the workman's comp piece, so if an unlicensed contractor had an individual hurt on the job, then potentially that liability could be a lean on the homeowner's home.
Correct.
Questions?
There's a lot of local people here that do small projects, you know, like repairing window sills and that kind of stuff. How is this going to affect them?
It won't. This will only be for larger projects that actually require a permit to be pulled through the county. So any small project that's not changing either structural, plumbing, or electrical, then it would not require a permit. So if you're, say you want to do a kitchen remodel, but you're leaving all your appliances in the same location, it doesn't require a permit, so a person can still do that without having to register through us.
And we do recognize, if somebody's been licensed in another county, they're still filing their information with us, but we don't require testing or addition.
Correct. If they are currently registered in a testing jurisdiction, then we would just accept that license as well.
And how does the proposed fee, how does that, we higher, lower in line was?
We are a little bit lower than some of the, like, Denver metro area, and a shade higher than, say, Douglas County, who has a lot more revenue than we do. So it's, we're basically right in line.
Thank you.
I guess from my, my perspective, I'm catching up on this. The saving grace to me is that the homeowner can pull and be the general contractor, and kind of then be able to hire who they'd like to. I'm always, I'm going to be a little hesitant to always add bureaucracy to people and red tape, but I think I understand the goal of this, and this is always something we can come back and revisit. If it's working, if it's not working, and make changes as necessary.
Yeah, a hundred percent. This is mostly for people who are uncomfortable doing their own work. And that way, we're guaranteeing as the governing body that they're getting a licensed, qualified person to do that work.
I think from previous discussions, you had also mentioned, I mean, if, if somebody were to require licensure or registration that wasn't, the timeline to get that is kind of within the timelines of you apply for the permit, you can drop your paperwork as well, and then when you're picking up your permit, you should be through that process.
Correct. Yeah, if you're not currently
There wouldn't be a delay.
Correct. If they're not currently licensed, it's just a matter of passing the test through the International Code Council, or providing us their license from another jurisdiction. I anticipate it being a week to two week processing time for a license, and that's well within the current permitting time.
I guess in the, one last one, if I recall, and forgive me, there wasn't as much reading this week. You also allow, if somebody had previously done work, projects within the county that had been inspected and passed, that qualified them as well?
That is not
Or was that to maintain the
That was to maintain.
Maintain licensure.
That's to maintain once you have your license.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and there's no need to do an annual testing. It's only a renewal. Once you pass that test originally, it's good for the lifetime, as long as you carry a license.
Okay, thanks.
If you let your license lapse, then you would need to retest.
How expensive is the license?
I don't have the numbers in front of me. Couple hundred bucks. It depends on what work you want to do. There's classes. So like, a Class A license can do any work, up to like, heavy highway, things like that. And I think that one, the most expensive was two hundred and fifty, if I remember correctly. Then they go down from there.
All right. I guess at that point, I guess I would just ask if there was any public comment? We have no public, but do always want to provide input, and this has been, this was noticed in the paper. Oh, we have a question.
Can you be specific on, so state license versus county license? If someone's licensed with the state, like a plumber or an electrician, do they have to get a separate one here?
It would be a separate license to do work in the county, but it would not be a separate testing. It would be no different than if they were to, say, work in El Paso County or Douglas County. They need to have a license for the county that they're working in.
Thank you. So with that, that concludes public comment on the item. And then I would accept a motion to approve the
So I just want to clarify here, we have on the agenda, which is proposed ordinance and resolution, but we have a separate ordinance and a separate resolution, and we're taking two separate votes on this. Have one for the ordinance, one for the resolution?
I have no problem doing those separately.
Do them separate?
Yeah.
Okay. But I assume so, but
I don't think the ordinance was set as just an, yeah, as an ordinance. I don't think the ordinance was set as just an, yeah, as an ordinance.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to prove, make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-three dash oh one and Elbert County ordinance to regulate contractor licensing within Elbert County, Colorado, repealing all ordinances and resolutions in conflict thereof, therewith, and providing penalties for the violation thereof.
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second for approval of the ordinance related to contractor licensing in the county. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, and I would accept a motion approving the resolution that would implement the ordinance.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make Resolution twenty-three dash to be determined, a resolution approving adopting the twenty twenty-three schedule of fees for the Elbert County contractor license fees.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution regarding contractor licensing implementation, and this contains a schedule of fees. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. All right, that completes our business for the day. We have no land use at one for board planning. We'll have our standard items teed up. We should be receiving and receiving our audit for the next meeting, so please put that down as an item. That was the completion of the twenty-one audit, just for public knowledge. Just a week before Christmas, we received the draft results of the audit, essentially stating that the financial numbers, everything submitted substantially materially reflects, is accurate, et cetera. But there were some procedural issues that were noted. We've provided our draft corrective action plans. We're waiting for response from that. And then, once we have that all rolled up, we should be receiving the final audit. But again, the draft audit report did substantiate that the use of our numbers for the twenty-three budgeting was appropriate, so. And then, another just quick announcement is, again, we had, beginning of last week, had received notice of resignation of our human resources director. We've coordinated with employers' council. There'll be an interim HR manager under contract starting next week, Tuesday, after we come back from the holiday. That person will support us as we fill the position permanently. That's kind of where we're at there. Indicated during the economic development strategic plan presentation that we do want to get a workshop set up. Thank you for sticking with us, but probably looking at some point after, you know, a week or two after our new county, hope, knock on wood, our new county manager joins us, so we kind of have the full county level leadership team together on that. Is there anything you'd like to see? All righty, well, thank you. As I said, we have no land use, no further business, so I'd accept a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it is ten fourteen, motion carries, we are adjourned.